Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, February 9th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. We have some new camera people here. We're always testing our new camera equipment here. Will everyone please stand for the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Quigley.
Present.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Alfasi.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight. There are no appointments or presentations tonight, so we're going to move right into our one and only public hearing, which is public hearing for proposed local law number one of the year 2015, a local law authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law section three dash C. Do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
I'm in favor. We do this every year since the governor implemented the two percent tax levy that we are all supposed to stay within, and the purpose of why we authorize a law or approve a law to override that is just in case there happens to be an emergency between today and when we're adopting our budget, if we had an emergency that required us to adopt a budget that was maybe slightly higher than two percent, it would be impossible for us to do that unless we pass this local law. So, we've been fortunate that every year that the two percent tax levy cap has been in effect, we have remained under that, so, and we're certainly planning on doing that again this year. So, the public hearing is now open. I'll ask anyone from the public if they would like to come up and speak on this matter. And if not, any comments from the board?
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor. Although the mayor said that we have a two percent tax cap, and that's correct, it would not just be if we had an emergency. We as a board could override that tax cap over the two percent if we thought it was in the best interest of the village of Tuckahoe, for instance. So, it doesn't necessarily have to just be for an emergency, although I'm quite pleased to say and echo the mayor's sentiment that I hope we will be able to keep it with, under that tax cap this year.
You know what? Very good point. You're absolutely right, and one of the difficulties of staying within the two percent tax cap is that eventually you have to really start to cannibalize your business operations. So, we've been fortunate that we have an awful lot of growth here in our municipality, and that has kind of kept us a little bit above the curve, although the tax sorcery claims that we've been paying out over the last couple of years has kind of equalized that. But unless we get some, you know, we hear it all the time, mandate relief, and unless we get some, a little bit of assistance from Albany, I think it's going to be impossible for all municipalities, more importantly for school districts, to stay within that threshold. So, but it's a very good point you make. It's not specifically, we're doing this just in case of an emergency. We may decide at some point, or a future board may decide, that, you know, it's the end of the road, and you get to the point where you have squeezed everything you can out of your existing operating budget, and we as legislators have to make some hard decisions. Are we going to start to compromise on certain areas within our departments that may jeopardize public safety, or jeopardize the quality of life that our residents are accustomed to with regards to our sanitation department, our highway department? So, I for one am very happy with the services that we get from our police department and our sanitation department. So, I'm hoping that we're going to be able to maintain that for many, many years down the road. So, yes, sir?
If I may, I would just add that the budget that we deal with is not just a bunch of dry numbers. As the mayor mentioned, everything we do in the budget affects every aspect of our life here in the village, the police, the DPW, recreation, the library, the community center, the running of village hall, the courts. So, these are real, there's a real impact to what we do in the budget, and I of course don't know off the top of my head, do we know when our budget hearing, public hearing's going to be on the budget? Will be presenting that later in the spring, and there will be a public hearing? Does anybody know off the top of their head? I mean, we'll announce it in plain time, but that's a time for people to come out and take a look at it, and just see, you know, you don't have to necessarily understand the numbers, but you'll see where every single line that we expend village funds on, your taxpayer money on, and on the different areas where we get the revenues, take a look and just see all the different things we do, and if something strikes you and say, it's really important, I want the village to concentrate on this, I want the village not to concentrate on this, that's the kind of stuff that's helpful for us to hear when we do the public hearing and we come up with our final budget. So, we'll be announcing that. It'll be probably sometime in April, okay, and you'll hear about it. But I think that's a great time to really see what makes the village tick.
Well said. I mean, we're five people. We think, we know what's best, and we do our best to make decisions on behalf of 6,500 people, but we really do need input from the public, so I think that's very well said. If I have no other comments, I'm going to ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I'll have a second for that, please?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. That will move us to the adoption of minutes, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 12th, 2015. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Do we have any correspondences this month?
No, we do not.
We do not. That brings us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything that's in our agenda tonight. Yes, sir?
Anthony Fiore, Reddington Place, Tuckahoe. Number three, authorizing the home rule request. Is that something that, I think that was passed once before? You guys something through that?
Yes, that's actually, what we've done is we've applied for a hotel occupancy tax, yes.
Okay, all right. That's it, thanks.
Okay, that's going to move us to resolutions, and our first resolution is resolution number one, adopting local law number one of 2015, authorizing a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in general municipal law, section three dash C. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the appointment of an assistant court clerk. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And I'm going to ask our village administrator, David Burke, to talk a little bit about our new assistant court clerk.
Great, thank you, Mayor. I have to thank Judge Fuller, Judge Lutwal, Maureen Stevens for really kicking this process off, but Pat Janiello retired after several years with the village. Shall we, my first one, wish her very well, retirement. I know she is going to spend some time with her kids and grandkids, so obviously good for her. We interviewed two very competent candidates for the assistant court clerk. Happy to have Barbara Serraminto join us. She's, she started in January, and she has previous experience in both Osning and Portchester Village Court system. She's, works from Monday through Wednesday all day, and she's actually fit in really well. She's trilingual, so she speaks Spanish and German, so it's a really, it's a really great help for us, so we're really happy to have her here.
Wow, very good. Thank you. Thanks for your assistance in that hire as well, too, and we certainly wish Pat the best. We had a nice little gathering for her here in the clerk's office the day she was leaving, and she's pretty excited about her retirement, so, very nice. Roll call?
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And we have, resolution number three is authorizing a home rule request to the New York State Legislature in support of a village of Tuckahoe hotel motel occupancy tax. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And again, I'm going to ask Mr. Burke if he could talk a little bit about that.
Sure. This is an annual quest, each village or any municipality that wants to have this hotel occupancy, needs to apply to the New York State Legislature each year to have this. It's for, obviously the hotel occupancy sales would be up to three percent of each room rate. Possible, possible revenues could be, you know, $100,000 to $150,000 if the hotel project does come through. So, this is something important that we should apply for and try to receive. Historically, it's very difficult for villages and any municipality other than cities to receive this. Yonkers has it, Mount Vernon, Rochelle, White Plains, but no other, no other non-city except the village of Rybrook, where I was personally from, has this. So, we work with then Assemblyman George Latimer. We're going to work with now Senator George Latimer to see if we can get through this, to the both houses and onto the governor's desk to see if he can sign this bill.
And we need to do this every year?
We need to do this every year, yes. Each new legislative session needs this home rule request.
Got it. Let's keep our fingers crossed.
Were you involved, Dave, in the process?
Yes.
At Rybrook? What were the challenges that the, that the village, actually, yeah, that the town had to overcome as opposed to what a city would have to?
Well, when, when speaking of this, they always, you know, this is going to come straight from George Latimer's, kind of how he puts it, is that in Albany, people believe that villages are bucolic and suburban places where there's not a lot of municipal infrastructure, and they don't need this type of tax. When they talk about cities, they say there's, there's more infrastructure needs, and that's why this really helps them out, because there's more people using hotels, and it's more of a drain on their services. What we argued is that it's still a drain on our services, it's a drain on our, our police and fire services to make sure that these, you know, these hotels can have the proper services, infrastructure, water, sewer. So, even though we're in a village, we're in a very unique village near larger urban centers, so I think that's one of the reasons, or one of the reasons we may have an advantage to play that off. But again, it's just, it's the perception that villages don't need these types of things.
And, and if I, if I may, and I disagree with that perception. I think you're right, that the perception's there, but I would certainly argue against it. And, and the reason is that, that our elected officials should realize that it's the larger urban cities of New York State that have multiple sources of revenue, and they have not just, not just your sales taxes, you know, Yonkers has that, they have an income tax, they have multiple sources of revenue, and we, as a small village, have very few, that being our property tax, so to speak. So, so that's what they need to recognize, and I will say that this is something that both parties, Republican and Democrats, have not been hearing us in Albany. They have not carried the water for us. The governor did not want to, to create any new taxes during a election year. The Republicans did not want to create any new taxes as well, and that's what they look at this as, not a revenue source for a small village like we are, but they look at it as, as a dirty new tax, and it's just not that. And hopefully they will, they will see fit to pass this, because we really need it, not just us, but other, other villages and towns as well.
And I think that's one of the angles that we can play off, is now that the, the two percent property tax cap levy is, is here, this is a non-property tax, non-property tax. It's an alternate revenue source. This is the angle that we have to play off, and this is what we're going to try to do.
It's applicable to people who are actually visiting from out of town.
Yes.
And paying for their room.
In every city where we stay at a hotel, we are paying a part to that municipality, to that city, towards their, to, you know, assist with their revenue so that they can accommodate the, the impact that it has.
Yeah.
And so it's really only equitable.
And you know what I find interesting is, when we first talked about doing this a couple of years ago, I know, and Tom, you travel a lot for business, too, you know, this is three percent. Sometimes it's 15 percent. You go to Orlando, you go to Las Vegas, where they have a lot of conventions, the rate is astronomical, so three percent is not too bad.
Sure. I mean, if you go to even as close as New York City, it's probably 18 and, you know, almost 19 percent. Why? Because those people are visiting, but they're still using your, your municipal services. So it does, you know, it's only fair, I would think, but we had to convince the legislature in New York State, you know, the governor, to sign it.
And hope the governor signs it, so we hope. Thank you.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the intent to join Westchester County in their submission of a consolidated government efficiency plan. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And David, I said I'm going to ask you quite a few questions tonight, so I'm going to ask you to talk about this.
That's fine.
I know you've been working on this.
Sure. This is, this has to do with the governor's tax freeze program. This is actually, I don't like to say mandates as a, as administrator, but this is something that is now that we have to do with the tax freeze program in order for our citizens in Tuckahoe to be able to get this. As many people know, is the school districts were underneath the tax cap, so that you got a rebate check in order for the Tuckahoe residents to get a rebate check on their tax, you know, on their tax levy. We have to stay within the tax cap and submit this plan by June 1st. What this does, though, is New York State has asked that there's consolidated plans. They've suggested that the county take the lead for municipalities, and that Bosse takes the lead for school districts. What this will allow us to do is be a part of that tax, that government efficiency program, allow Westchester County to kind of take the lead, because they have the, they have the resources basically to do it. We're just going to feed them our information, and they're going to come up with the plan.
And without this, if we do stay under the two percent tax cap, if we didn't subscribe to this, residents would not get their rebate, is that correct?
Exactly. We need to be a part of this plan, and we have to have the, the plan approved by New York State.
Right.
And it's going to be a lot easier if Westchester takes the technical leads on this plan.
Very much so, yes.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And we have resolution number five, which is authorizing the adoption of the village of Tuckahoe Workplace Safety and Loss Preventive Program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And David, I'm going to ask you one more time, because I know you put an enormous amount of hours into preparing the documents, so, thank you very much, by the way.
Yeah, myself had a lot of help from our, our new safety committee, which I'll get into. One of the, one of the goals of this plan is to really put on the forefront that preventing accidents and safety matters in the village, from just office workers to DPW, to the police force, to every asset of, or just residents, people that use our facilities, it's kind of at the forefront, and it's basically a buy-in for everybody that, this is what we're going to start looking at. We have to start looking at these things in a holistic way, and what can we do? So this plan kind of puts in some, some operational things in place where we've started a safety committee, myself, the police chiefs on it, our DPW, general foreman's on that. It's kind of, that's the kind of the core of the committee, and we're going to go out to each department and kind of do job hazard analysis to see if there's certain things that we can do to make sure that people aren't going to get hurt, and they're not going to get injured, and what as a village can we do to really promote safety? But it's also a buy-in from the workers here, where if they see something, they have an easy form to fill out and say, this needs to be looked at, so the safety committee can kind of take a step back and go, something needs to be done. It's, hopefully, it's going to help when we go out and shop for general liability and workers' comp rates to say, we've had this program in place, we're doing our proper training, we're doing what we need to do to make this a safe work environment.
Which is key. I know that's, that's just crucial.
Yes, with, especially with some of the workers' comp rates that we're getting, it's, we've got to do a better job of keeping people safe.
Thank you. I know you put a lot of work into it. Thank you.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number six is declaring police department equipment as surplus and authorizing the sale of said equipment. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number seven is authorizing the payment of 2014 vacation days to an employee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Just a quick clarification, in case it sounded wrong, this is not 2,100, 2014 consecutive vacation days. This is for the year 2014, so.
That's a good point.
Just in case it gets sort of heard the wrong way.
Trustee Giordano.
Yeah, I take that down.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number eight is ratifying permission for the Shiloh Baptist Church to hang temporary banners at Main Street and the Lake Avenue parking lot. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
You know, we've had a lot of discussion over the last month. It seems that we're becoming like a banner city. There's banners on all of our parking lots and fences, so I guess we're going to have to really take a hard look at this, especially, you know, where our Main Street Park is, I know we have a new, where we're going to be renovating the park, there's going to be a new fence there. I don't think it's going to be conducive to hanging banners on that fence. So, it's just a thought that I'm putting out for the rest of the trustees to think about this.
Right, and when we had our workshop meeting last Thursday, we discussed this at length, and I spent some time over the weekend looking at our ordinance, and I'm comparing with a couple of the other municipalities' ordinances to see where we can do some tweaking, because we are concerned that the, the village is sort of becoming a, you know, a billboard for a lot of different things, some good, maybe some don't need to be there. So we're going to reconsider that, and there might be some changes in the law coming up in the next couple meetings.
Very good.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number nine is authorizing the issuance of a special cabaret permit to the Broken Bow Brewery for a Kolsch Fest with live music on February 21st, 2015, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
And anybody's going to ask me what a Kolsch Fest is, I guess I'm going to have to read what is a Kolsch Fest. Am I the only, I'm quizzing everybody.
Kolsch is a German type of, the type of German beer.
Oh, it's, okay. Something to do with beer.
Oh, well, that I figured.
Beer numpa.
Well, it sounds like fun. Three to 11:00 PM.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number 10 is authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $413,728.73. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Quigley.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Alfasi.
We're all pretty quiet when it comes to paying these vouchers, but in favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor, yeah. Got to pay the bills, that's for sure.
I know.
That's going to bring us to our departmental reports, the board, and as always, we start with our very able and competent Chief of Police, Mr. Chancantza.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I just, this evening, actually this afternoon, I forwarded the annual report to the mayor and the Board of Trustees. I just wanted to speak briefly on, on the document. I'll just touch some of the highlights and not get into the detail, but I just wanted to recognize the hard work and dedicated efforts of the members of the police department, starting with that, once again, it's the 10th consecutive year that we received the highest award from AAA for our traffic safety program. Again, 10 years of recognizing the programs and efforts of preventing accidents and contributing to traffic safety. It was awarded this past October by AAA at a luncheon, and we're very proud of the fact that we're one of very few communities in Westchester County to receive the level of awards that AAA has issued over the years. We rounded out and finished our installing in-car computers into every single one of our patrol vehicles. We started last year with a grant from the traffic, Governor's Traffic Safety Committee with two vehicles. We headed four more this year, so now every single patrol vehicle in the village has an in-car computer that allows officers to write tickets electronically, to fill out accident reports electronically right in the car, and receive other important data and information through, through the New York State system. So, we're very proud that we got that, we're up to date, and completely paid for through grant money. When we talked about shared services, a program that was started as a pilot late last year, and then in 2014, all 12 months of the year, was the Midnight Tour Communication Project, where the Westchester County Department of Public Safety has been dispatching our radio calls and other communications on the midnight tour, 12:00 midnight to 8:00 AM. The project has been very, very successful. The county had dispatched 891 calls for service for the village. This program allows our officers to be out on the street, when there were some reductions in staffing levels, it allowed the same amount of patrols, in fact, an increased patrols and increased supervision because of this program, and it's been a tremendous success. So certainly our thanks to Westchester County Department of Public Safety and Commissioner George Longworth, and to County Executive Vastarino, and our own county legislator Sheila Markot for her support in getting this program started, and the first year has been a tremendous success all the way around.
If I could add to that, I think it's also important to note that during an emergency or a very troubled evening, whether it's a weather-related issue or if there's something else going on, we have that opportunity to flip the switch back to us, and we've done that recently during some of the storms.
Yes, as recent as last night.
Right, yes.
When, 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 in clement weather's in the forecast, when there's, if the 4:00 to 12:00 is very busy and there's a carryover into the midnight tour where there's a high to 12:00 is very busy, and there's a carryover into the midnight tour where there's a high level of arrests and activities, we don't, we don't turn it over, you know, we keep local control. It happened, I think, about eight times last year, over the course of the year, so we're not talking about it happening, happening very often, but we always have that ability to, to do it ourselves when we need to. Part of the process, too, is relying on our local neighbors, the Eastchester Police Department, as well as, most importantly, the Bronxville Police Department, where we've had to house prisoners in their cell overnight. I think it happened two or three times over the course of the year. So, so it's, it's a great cooperative effort. Couldn't do it without our partners, and we certainly couldn't, couldn't do it without the Westchester County Department of Public Safety, but the program has been a tremendous We started a, a program called Tip 411. It's a, it allows people to send tips, photos, videos to the police department anonymously through either their smartphone, texting, tablets, their regular computer, they could email tips in, they could, we, we have an app dedicated to the Tocco Police Department. It's been successful in its early stages in that people have reported some, some criminal activities anonymously. The whole program was pretty much brought about by our District Attorney, the Honorable Janet DeFiori, who used seized assets, so it's a, it's a win-win where we took monies from criminal activities, our District Attorney did, and turned it back over to police departments throughout Westchester County to enable them to, to report crimes anonymously, and we're getting it out to the schools particularly, because that's where we think we're gonna benefit, not only, you know, hardcore criminal activities, but underage drinking parties and bullying and those types of, of events that we, we think that our young people would be instrumental in getting word out to law enforcement about some things that we should, we should know about. So, we started that program late, late in 2014. Again, we've, it's been successful in its early stages, but we really need to get the word out, and, and that's what we're in the process of doing now.
Is there any suggestions on how we can advertise that?
It's on our website, we developed flyers, you know, we have our instructors, instructors teaching DARE at the high school and middle school levels, as well as the elementary school. Now, the elementary school, we don't see, you know, 5th graders necessarily contributing to this very much, but in the middle school and high school, where that curriculum is going to start in the next few weeks, that's where we feel is a big push in getting a message out. So, our DARE instructors will be bringing that information out to the schools, and, and that's where we're hoping to get, you know, the most contributions.
Have these anonymous tips led to any real, you know, any type of...
It's, it's launched some investigations as far as some criminal activities. Again, it, it didn't really come to fruition until, I believe, November at the, at the tail end of 2014. Some of the information received are, are currently under investigation. We did receive some underage drinking parties, it actually turned out they were submitted to us, but they were in the Crestwood Section of Yonkers, and we quickly turned it over to the Yonkers Police Department. So, again, it has the potential to be tremendously beneficial to, to crime prevention. I just wanted to mention that, you know, every year we pick an Officer of the Year, and this year, the police officer Amelia Yankowski was 2014 Officer of the Year. She'll be recognized at our, at our award ceremony in May, and her picture will be prominently put out here on our plaque in, in the hallway for all her contributions to the police department, not only in 2014, but in her entire career. So, congratulations to, to Officer Yankowski. And then it goes on to report of all our special units, including Child Passenger Seat, Bicycle Patrol, Motorcycle Unit, Emergency Response Unit, and Youth Services, the DARE Program, and, and all of the activities of our youth officers, as well as our community outreach efforts. That's all part of the report. There's a section devoted just for the blot of reports and the types of, the number of calls and the types of calls that we respond to over the course of the year, as well as the traffic citations issued, both moving and, and parking violations, and then just wrapped up with the police, the grants that the police department acquired over the course, course of 2014. So, we'll put it on to the website in the next couple of days. There are several copies available out in the hall, and then obviously, if anyone has any questions asked to the report, I'd be glad to answer them at a later date.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. DiMarco, I'm sure we have lots of conversations about snow, and I guess the first question I'm gonna ask you is, do we have enough salt with all these icy roads?
I'd like to talk about anything but snow.
I know, I'm sure.
Well, yes, we, we do have plenty of salt for the conditions that we have coming up. But, you know, I guess my prediction, my original prediction of a warm and snowless winter is completely torn out the window.
That ended around Christmas time.
Yeah, but we did have a late start to the winter, and we did have some warm weather, so we just have to look for warm weather, look forward to warm weather. But I just wanna start, I have just a couple of items. You know, when we're out plowing, you know, I noticed there are a lot of people that are throwing snow back into the streets, and, you know, people just generally think that that's a quick way of snow melting, so I think that's why they do that, not realizing that during the night, you know, we do get colder conditions, and then we create an icing condition, and once we create an icing condition, it, it's a dangerous condition. So, that's why I'm normally driving around and asking people to please keep the snow onto their property in the mounds that are existing, and not create, you know, more dangerous conditions. Number two, garbage pickup. You know, historically, the Village of Tocco is always picking up garbage, and really, the only way that we close is if the Murphy Station is closed, and that's where we dump all our trash and garbage. So, if they're closed, we obviously had no place to dump, so we're not picking up garbage. I think it happened just once in the years that I've been here, and that was just when they predicted the two feet of snow. But what I do ask is, is please, consider my workers when they're coming to get your garbage in the back of your home, shovel a path for them, you know, maybe put some salt down, make it safe for them. You know, they're out at 6:30 in the morning, and a lot of times, they can't see the icing condition, so carrying a 60-gallon, gallon container of garbage down icy steps is treacherous and very dangerous. So, I ask to please be considerate. If anything, you know, take the garbage in the back, put it in a location where they easily access it, and at that point, you know, we'll, we'll take your garbage. But I, I am telling my men, and you could blame me for it, that if we do have a treacherous and dangerous condition, they don't take your garbage. But please, just help up that little bit. We're gonna be closed February 12th in observance of Lincoln's birthday, and that's a Thursday, so we'll be picking up Thursday's garbage on, I think it's just recyclables and, and metals, we're gonna be picking that up on a Tuesday. And also, February 16th, which is a Monday for President's Day, we're gonna be picking up the garbage that Tuesday instead of that Monday. But my standing here wouldn't be complete without commending, you know, the Department of Public Works for all they do. A lot of people don't see, you know, them being out there in ominous weather conditions that we have, and they're, they really do a great job for the community. They should be proud of the men that they have there, 'cause I know I am. And also for the police department, for the great work the men and women there do for us. That's all I really have to say.
It's been a tough couple of weeks for you, I know that.
Me and Tom were talking, we haven't even seen sun.
Yeah, it's, you know, and I know I've shouldered a couple of complaints, people are, are, you know, after a week or so of the big snow mountain, they're like, hey, when are you gonna move these mountains to snow? What they have to realize is, one of the problems that we're facing this year is we're just not getting those 50-degree rainy days after a snowstorm, and in prior years, we've had that. And, you know, if you get an eight-inch snowfall, and then maybe a couple of days after that, it warms up into the 40s, and just even a warm day cuts those snow piles down dramatically. I mean, it's gonna be down to zero in another two days, so we're just not getting a break on the temperature. So, that's kind of locking in some of these mountains. I know that your team has done a great job in pulling snow as much as you can off the main thoroughfares. We were very fortunate that we got permission to go ahead and put some of that snow on the Marble Dale Road vacant land where the hotel will be built one day. So, that's helpful, as well as down behind the Parkway Medical Center. So, it's, it's nice that we have both of those locations to go ahead and dump, but there's just a limit as to, you know, how much time you can put into carting that snow away. Do you feel you've got most of the big mountains, you know, cut down?
No.
Okay, all right, okay.
No, every time I turn around, it just seems to be another mound. We're doing the best we can, and again, we're hitting mainly the main thoroughfares, and that, that's just simply to make it easy for everybody to commute throughout Tocco, the train stations, the main roads, and, you know, we do have two train stations here, so we have to keep those two areas clean and clear.
You guys have done a great job, and it's pretty treacherous when they're out there. It's dark at, you know, the time that they're out there trying to collect their garbage, and so it's, it's a tough job in the wintertime for them, I know that.
Thank you.
Good work. Thank you, Frank. Camille, anything? Gary, anything?
I'm Mr. Porter, Mr. Mayor.
David, anything else? We're gonna bring Johnny up, of course, okay. Mr. Galuzzi.
Mayor.
From our wonderful community center.
Trustees, good evening. I'd just like to thank Frank and his guys from DPW, they do a tremendous job. With a cruel winter like we are, we're having, it's just, they go above and beyond, and especially keeping the community center, that area, as you know, can be real difficult to keep clean and maintain, especially now that we have the seniors in there early in the morning and into midday. So, Frank and his guys are there, and they're, they're very attentive to salting and keeping the, the property clean, so thank you, DPW and Frank. I'm here to, to shed some light on the, the, actually, the, the annual Easter egg hunt. I'm here early to promote it because we're changing location for it. It's gonna be at Parkway Oval Field on Consulate Drive, right off Consulate Drive, this coming year. It's Saturday, April 4th, so I'd like all the moms and dads to mark it on your calendar that that's where we'll be having the, the Tocco Annual Easter Egg Hunt, Parkway Oval Field. Those festivities will begin around 11 o'clock and go till about 1:00. More details, you can reach me over at the community center, 231-0229. I'll be happy to speak a little bit more about it as we get the details, the final details, in another few days. This past Saturday, we had a very successful blood drive with the New York Blood Center. We collected 48 pints of blood, raised some awareness, and a lot of, a lot of the folks out there did sign up for, for, to become organ donors, which I think is important. Special thanks to Rita, Master Buradino, and a big thank you, of course, to those who did donate blood.
I gave him a pint of mine on Saturday.
You always do, you always do. And that, that should be it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. David?
Yeah, I have a couple of things. One of the things I kinda wanted to elaborate on, it was Trustee Quigley's comments about the budget and how such, it's a, it's a long, kinda strenuous process, and some of the things maybe, some of the people saw is that we did have an executive session, not this previous Saturday, but on the 31st, where the five of you and myself got together, and it wasn't to look at numbers per se, each budget line, but it was kind of the, you know, 10,000, you know, from, from high above, a lot of the departments, what we really want the next year to look like. So, a lot of people don't realize that's one of the things that we did. I will be meeting with my department heads this week, I'm gonna have a long week of going through lines, each of them individually, kind of asking a question, figuring what's in these, and then we're, I'm gonna, you know, have some of these preliminary numbers, and it's gonna go back to the Board of Trustees, and we're gonna meet another 8:00 in the morning on the 28th to go over these, some of these preliminary numbers, and that's just the kind of start of it. We're gonna have a couple of those workshops at 8:00 in the morning on the Saturdays that people are welcome to come to. And then it's, 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 it's one of those things where we're kinda learning together, where you guys have done it one way, and then I'm, I'm not trying to change the process, but we're trying to improve upon the process, better communication with the, the board, to the department heads of how we can craft a better budget. And one of my ultimate goals is, in the long run, is to focus on capital projects and capital project financing and timing of some of these things. We've got kind of, in the past, some bad timing on some of the finances and getting some of this kinda stuff done, so one of my ultimate goals is to figure out a better way to do that going forward. So, it's gonna be a very busy next couple of months, and I think people should look out for those budget workshop meetings and come out and tell us exactly what they're gonna be looking for. I just wanna promote the town of Eastchester, actually, their, their town board meeting is here in Tocco at 100 Columbus Ave, a Marble Dale Meeting Hall tomorrow at 7:00 PM, so if any Tocco residents wanna go down there for the town board meeting, it's available. And a good piece of news that we've heard this past weekend in, in the legis, the county executive in his budget, $5 million was, was awarded for the Community Housing Infrastructure Investment Program. And this $5 million is basically to offset or supplement some of the CDBG money that is not coming to communities. So, in the first year, this $5 million is going to those projects that have awarded money in the last funding cycle, but no CDBG money came through. So, those are, those are projects that are taking priority, and the Village of Tocco had three projects awarded money, but we couldn't, we couldn't do some sidewalk improvement, some sewer relining. So, the next week and a half, we're gonna take a step back, look at those projects again, look at some of the numbers, look at the financing. One of the problems is that this program is only 50% funding, whereas the CDBG funding, you could traditionally get more money for it. So, we gotta take a step back to see if we wanna fund these at the levels of how much this would cost now, but it's a start that the CDBG funding has dried up, that the Westchester County's kinda stepped up and provided some of this funding. So, it's some good news.
That was very good news, I was happy to hear that. Yeah, I guess, one of the questions I have, and, and I'm curious, maybe you know the answer to this, the letter that they sent, did you interpret that as we are going to specifically get the grant funding for those three separate projects, or are we kind of in the mix of they're gonna maybe have a panel who's gonna decide, well, they're gonna maybe fund one or two of ours, some in Yonkers, some in Portchester?
It's, yeah, I talked to actually Anthony Zano from Westchester County today about it a little bit, and he said that we should just go for full funding for all the projects, but they are gonna, they are gonna take a step back and figure out which ones they can fund fully, but I do believe that we have to take a step back and figure out which ones we really want, or what is that one prime project that we really wanna get done, because I do believe that we're gonna get some funding from this.
Right.
And historically, Westchester County likes to spread the money out to each community, the CDBG money, and I feel that they're gonna do the same thing here, so if we pick the project we want to put number one priority list, I think we have a good chance of getting some funds.
And we have to update the values on each one of those projects, too.
So, we need to take a little bit of affirmative action on this. We're gonna do a little lobbying on behalf of our projects. We just don't say, here's our number one, and then sit back. We wanna do a little bit of work with Mr. Zano and anybody else up at the county office?
Yeah, and I think it's, it's kinda, I know Anthony there and Norma Drummond are probably just gonna be looking at this, and if we kinda telegraph to them, this is the project we really want, I believe that we can get some of that money.
Well, I sure hope so. Okay, that's gonna bring us to miscellaneous business. The next village board meeting is going to be 28 days from tonight, which is March 9th, 2015. As Mr. DiMarco mentioned, DPW is closed this Thursday, February 12th, in observance of Abraham Lincoln's birthday, and village offices and DPW will be closed on February 16th in observance of President's Day. And that is going to bring us to our Board of Trustees' member reports, and we always start with your Deputy Mayor, Mr. Tom Giordano.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few announcements, as usual, as liaison to the zoning and planning boards, I'll go over the, the meeting agendas for the following meetings. The upcoming planning board meeting is on February 24th, and the items are 100 Main Street, which is an architectural review, 100 Marble Dale, which is a site plan review for the hotel and restaurant, and then 125 Marble Dale, which is a site plan review for a new storage warehouse. The next zoning board meeting is on March 11th. The agenda hasn't been yet announced, but I believe it continues with the review of the Main Street, 100 Main Street project in terms of the variances that they are seeking in connection with their applications. I did attend the previous meeting on February 4th, and my goal there was to get a sense of how the, the zoning board is interfacing with the public, and, and I did find that Chairman Gallo and the members of the board, I thought, had done a, a, a fine job in, first of all, moving along the agenda items. Due consideration was given and good discussion that really balanced the, the protection of our, of our laws, our zoning laws, to make sure that we preserve our quality of life as against reasonable requests for variances of those laws with, from property owners. So, I thought there was good collaborative discussion. I think there are certainly, you know, complicated issues that need to get resolved and achieve a consensus of opinions, which can take time, especially with these larger projects, which we are now going through a stage where I think is fairly unprecedented for the, having so many of these large projects going on at one time. So, these, I think, require some patience and, and time, but I was favorably impressed with the proceedings, and my intention is to attend the planning board's meeting in March. I'll miss the, the, the February one, as I won't be in town, but I would like to get a similar sense from, from them, and I expect to have just as much of a positive report following that. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Trustee Quigley.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the many, many great events going at the library, and also just to mention upfront, along with DPW, the Village Library will also be closed on President's Day, February 16th. But the following weekend, there'll be a special presentation of the Brontes. These is Charlotte, Emily, and other Brontes written some of the best-known and best-loved books, Jane Eyre, Wuthering Heights. They'll be at 11:00 on Saturday, February 21st, as they will discuss and explore the works of the Bronte sisters. Very timely, it's already underway and will continue through April, which is the AARP Tax Aid Program, every Friday from 10:30 in the morning till 12:30 in the afternoon at the library. It'll be no appointment, just come, and there'll be people from AARP specially trained to help you with your taxes, as we know that this is becoming the big push in the season. On February 24th, 11:00, there'll be members of the Jansen Hospice and Palliative Care Organization will be making a presentation at the library on the idea of palliative care for elderly people, seriously ill patients and their families. Books and coffee, what's, what's a great book you've read lately? What's, what are the hot titles going on right now? Let's discuss them. You can tell them what you're reading, people tell you what they're reading. That'll be Wednesday, February 25th at 11:00. And lots of other, the usual many story programs for the young kids and the very young kids, sing-along programs, the usual times, all during the week, movies for the adults, the teenagers, and the children, so lots and lots of things is always going on at the library. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Trustee Luizzi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna start with the Tocco Seniors Center. As the month of February begins, there's a lot of activities that will be taking place celebrating Valentine's Day and Black History Month. Tomorrow, which is February 10th, they will celebrate Black History Month with a showing of the movie, The Butler, and they then will follow up on Thursday in celebration of Valentine's Day with a sandwich luncheon with a special appearance by Supervisor Calavito, who will be supplying the Valentine's Day cake. Then on February 17th, the seniors will travel down to St. John the Divine Cathedral and follow that tour of that site with lunch at the Dinosaur BBQ located on 125th Street in Harlem. And then they'll conclude Black History Month celebration on the 24th of February with Reader's African Show, which is, will encompass the African culture with dances and fashion, and... dances and fashion. And Thursday, February 26th, the Scarsdale Women's Club will be in with the choral singers to perform music from Guys and Dolls. And as I said earlier, in January, the Tocco Senior Center is celebrating their 45th anniversary this year, the longest-running senior center in the county of Westchester. My next report is from the Tocco History Committee. As always, the committee continues to collect past and present photos, written memories, newspapers, and relics. If you have any of these items in your possession, please bring them down. They'll make copies, and they will catalog them for future reference. They also now have a mini marble museum on display here on the second floor of Village Hall. It consists of a diorama of a working quarry. If you, um, if we can pan around the, um, the room here, there are pictures that, um, show the many famous buildings that utilized marble that was mined here in Tocco. They also have a few covelettes ready and available for sale. They're available at a, uh, princely sum of forty dollars. They're available here at the clerk's office or at the community center. You see John Galuzzi if you'd like to get one of those items. And lastly, the committee works here very diligently. Every Wednesday from 9:00 AM until noon, they always encourage residents to stop by to view the collections. It's simply a wonderful, wonderful undertaking that they have continued to, um, to undertake, preserving the history of Tocco and sharing it with everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I, you know, I was just visiting my dad down in Florida for a couple of days, and he said to me, he said, "Take a look inside of my bed there. Look what's on the edge of the bed." And it's one of, the blankets, we call it a blanket. So, uh, it's down in Florida, too. Trustee Alfassi, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no-, nothing to report from, uh, the committee, which is, uh, the environmental committee. But what I did wanna spend a couple moments on was something, a theme that we've been talking about today, uh, in our meeting, and that's the budget. Uh, I again wanna encourage everyone, as, as Trustee Quigley certainly said, uh, please come out. Please come out and take a look at our budget, take a look at each and every line item, uh, learn a little bit more about it. But I also wanted to encourage everyone here in, in Tocco to get online, get on the internet, and take a look at, uh, our state budget. And in particular, I, I wanted to remind you this. And, and Mr. Mayor, you alluded to it earlier, which is, you know, one of the largest portions of our budget is for public schools. And each of us knows, our taxes, pro-, more than half go to public schools. Take a look at the budget in Albany. One of the things you need to look at is something called the Gap Elim- Elimination Adjustment Act. It happened in 2010. I'm not gonna go into the politics of it. I'm going to ask you to just read a little bit about it. Read a little bit about what the governor's proposing when it comes to the education and the funding of public schools. Some of the criteria the governor would like, some of the criteria the legislation would like. Read a little bit about our, our legislature, and in particular, what's happening in our public schools. I think you'll be surprised. I think you'll be pleasantly surprised. And form your own opinions. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, I'll be brief tonight. I'm gonna talk about a couple of items. The first is the Crestwood Project that's ongoing. Um, as you, everyone can see, it is incredibly quickly coming together. Uh, they have all their, um, modular units are set in place, and, um, the weather has held them back a little bit. We've given them permission to work on this past weekend, 'cause they lost a couple of days with the, uh, foul weather. So, um, they seem to be on track. I've had some of the residents who live on Oakland Avenue call about some of the issues of the Con Edison Project that's ongoing. And it's my understanding, and I, I asked Mr. Burke earlier, that that ConEd Project is independent from the project that's down there. For some reason, ConEd just woke up and they decided to go ahead and completely tear up Oakland Avenue in Portion of Lincoln, um, right now, while one of the biggest projects that we've ever had in that area is ongoing, um, it, especially in the middle of the winter. So, I don't understand that logic, but, uh, here again, as I've said in the past, Con Edison kinda the, uh, you know, they march to their beat of their own drum, not our drum. So, uh, I asked the residents in that area to please be patient. Uh, the police department will make sure that they can have access, if the road has to be closed, that they'll have access to their homes. And, um, let's hope that that project gets wrapped up quickly. Last week, uh, a separate note, last week, I, along with our treasurer and our village administrator, David Burke, we participated in a webinar on fiscal stress monitoring, which is put on by the New York State Controller's Office. For the past two years, the Controller's Office has undergone a process of examining municipalities' year-end financial statements. And what they're doing is they're looking to see if any municipalities or school districts, if they're heading towards financial trouble, or if they are in financial trouble. And one of the primary indicators that they look at is a municipality or a school district's fund balance, or what I'm gonna call your savings account balance. A municipality, we should keep approximately between five and 10% in our fund balance. And what that means is if you have a $10 million budget, you wanna keep between a half a million dollars and a million dollars in fund balance. And that's there for emergencies. It's, uh, you know, we're not supposed to keep too little money, but we're also not supposed to keep too much money in fund balance, because it's not our money, it's the taxpayers' money. And you shouldn't be holding too much of the taxpayers' money in a fund balance account. When we closed our books on May 31st of 2014, we had a much lower-than-anticipated fund balance. And this was due to projects and tax surcharge claims that we had paid with the anticipation of borrowing to pay them back. We intentionally held off in borrowing in order to capture all of the costs for the projects that were being completed, but unfortunately for us, when the controller comes in and they take a snapshot picture of your fund balance, they're only doing it once, and it's on that day at the end of the year. Um, they do not take into account the fact that we had, um, already had discussions, and we planned on borrowing. As everybody knows, we did go out and borrow a little over a million dollars to go ahead and repay for some of these projects and tax certs. So, um, it's because of the fact that they took that snapshot picture of us having a low fund balance that I'm fairly certain, when their report comes out in about a month, that we're gonna be on what's called a fis-, a, uh, fiscal stress watch list. Um, we put an awful lot of energy when we adopted our budget to make sure that our fund balance is at a level that we wanted, which was between that five and 10%. Um, it is today, because of course we backfilled our, um, expenses with the revenue, or the income, I should say, from the, uh, borrowing that we did. So, I think, um, what I'm talking about here is it sorta kinda blends back into what our village administrator said, which is, um, we, we, we need to do a little better job, and we will, of course, now that we have a village administrator, in terms of timing, to make sure that when we're going to take on a capital project, not an emergency project, but a long-term capital project, that we have the funding vehicles in place before, during, and then sometimes, of course, it has to be afterwards, which was the case that we had this year. So, um, we're closely monitoring this to make sure that we stay in this five to 10% window. One of the things we did this year in the budget that we're living in right now is we made a conscious effort to not, um, account for all of the very large Department of Building fees that are coming in with respect to a hotel that's being built and some of the other large projects. So, we did that consciously, knowing that the money that comes in would actually add and increase our fund balance. So, we are on track. It kinda, um, you know, it makes me feel good that these projects are happening. And the thought process many years ago was that by not accounting for some of those large fees, it would satisfy our fund balance requirements now. And then, once the, uh, projects are built and the certificate of occupancies are then issued, then these projects, these properties are back on the tax roll. What a lot of people need to realize is that when you have a, a project that's during, that's under construction, it's still generating almost no property tax revenue for the village. So, it's, once these projects are completely finished, built, um, and CO'd, that's when we're gonna go ahead. Not only us, but the school districts are also gonna receive some of the tax revenue from it. So, uh, it's something we're looking forward to, uh, but I just wanted to kinda be proactive and get out there ahead of the curve, that I do believe that we're gonna be on the fiscal stress list, so it's not gonna be a shock, uh, to me at all. Uh, I've talked to the board about it, and, uh, we understand that, um, that may be a news item, and if it is, I just wanted to make sure that I was out front in, uh, the explanation of it. So, um, it's unfortunate, like I said, that they only look at your books just once a year. And I know our, um, village administrator even talked to somebody in the Controller's Office to see if they would actually take a look at our status right after they took their snapshot photo, and they said, "No, uh, it's just, they do it once a year." So, yes, David?
I just wanted to add that, um, the, obviously, the fiscal stress monitoring system, it's, it's, it's a point system where certain things are weighted more heavily than other things. Fifty percent of your score is that year-end fund balance. Another 20% is the operating deficit surplus. So, if we paid out more of our bills out of the fund balance, that snapshot on May 31st looks really bad, and that's 60% of the score. So, that's one of the worst things. But when we took this webinar and we learned a little bit more about it, one of the key takeaways is that timing, situations may have changed. It's the timing of that snapshot of that picture that's just unfortunate for us right now. And, oh, you know, the, the state comptroller says it, is that's just one of the unfortunate things about the system, is that sometimes you just caught at a bad time. And that's exactly what happened here.
And the key thing is that, um, it's not a realistic picture of what our, our accounting status is. So, um, that's actually very good. Happy about that. On a very positive note, the New York State Society of Professional Engineers has chosen the Fisher Avenue commuter parking lot as their project of the year. That's, uh, that's a, uh, pretty interesting. I was actually very surprised to hear that. That's quite important. The project is considered a model of green infrastructure, sustainable redevelopment in urban settings. So they're going to, uh, give us an award, and I believe, Mr. DiMarco, are you gonna be going to that? And I know I'm gonna go, and I think David's going as well. Um, so I think it's, uh, quite impressive. I wanna thank, uh, Dolph Rothfeld Engineering for their recognition. Um, and we're gonna all be there together to receive this important award. Um, I was kinda surprised that they actually gave a parking lot project this, project of the year, when you think about all the structures that could have received this. So, I thought that was pretty interesting, very good.
And just the, uh... Just recognition, Sandy Reyes-Gara.
Oh, yes.
Who contributed the, uh, I think some landscaping design to the, uh, to the whole look of the parking lot. I think that was, uh, an important consideration.
That's right. Thank you. I forgot about that. Thank you. I wanna congratulate the Tocco Cheerleaders. And I was told tonight they're not called Cheer-, they're called Cheer Team. So, um, I guess I'm old school. Uh, so the Tocco Cheer Team, uh, this is the first Tocco Cheer Team to place in the national competition. And on this Saturday, down in Florida, sunny Florida, they came in in fifth place in the entire United States of America. So, congratulations to them. Um, the word I heard was that everyone was saying, "Where's Tocco? What's Tocco? Tiny little Tocco, fifth in the entire United States." So I think that's, uh, that's extraordinary. So, uh, wanna congratulate them and wish them a safe trip back. Uh, they didn't have to go to school today anyway, so hopefully they're in Disneyland today. And that is gonna wrap up what I have to say. So, this brings us to the second opportunity to address the board, if anybody has anything. Yes, sir?
Anthony Fury, Three Binland. On snow removal, if anybody has a fire hydrant in front of their house, just make sure cleared, clear from the snow for the firefighters, for them to see. And, um, one other thing, the boarded-up store on Main Street, anything progress with that, or anything?
Um, actu-, the boarded-up property that's down there. Actually, I was gonna, Gary, I don't know if you have any update on the Vivian House project?
No, the, no new update. There's, um, things going on. Um, there are things going on, Mr. Mayor, that, um, hopefully soon we'll have some, uh, progress with.
Right.
Okay.
Good.
That's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Well, if that's all we have tonight, I see there's nobody else in the room. Uh, if there's no other business tonight, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
All right, we're gonna close this meeting. Do I have a second for that?
Seconds.
Thank you. Till next time, Tocco. Have a very good evening.